Well, good morning, everyone. Welcome to the meeting of the Minnehaha County Commission. As Commissioner Benega, who is remote today, pointed out, it looks like we can't get along and that we're not very popular because there's not many people in the room and we're pretty well spread out. But as most of you know, I think yesterday, the Emergency Operations Center celebrated its 50th day in operation. So we've been working under these new circumstances for quite some time, but it provides daily challenges nevertheless, and we really appreciate everybody out in the county. There's a lot of people that are really struggling right now, and we remember all of you. We think about all of you every day. So we're going to start our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Liberty and justice for all.
Since we are so appropriately socially distanced, I'm going to take my mask off so you can all understand what I'm saying. And just a reminder that there are documents available for review down next to Commissioner Heiburger. Please remember to silence your cellphone. I just did that myself. And Carol is here if you need a listening device. So that takes us to routine business. First, I'd consider a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Barr?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Next item is to approve the commission meeting minutes for April 14, 2020.
Move to approve.
Second.
Second. Benega?
We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Benega?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Barr?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item, our bills to be paid. You know, as you know, we've, during the month of April, we went down to two meetings to try to do our part for keeping people from intermingling too much, and so we've got results on a lot of bills when we go down to every other week. And so I'd entertain a motion to approve the bills.
Pay the bills.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Karski? Aye. Heiburger?
Aye.
Barr?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item, there are reports.
Madam Chair, this is Jeff. Can I make a comment here?
Absolutely.
Hello. So it is a little discombobulating because the video that I'm getting is also offset by several seconds to the audio I get over my phone, and I just wanted to mention that. It's, the delay that you guys get is, is very similar to the delay I get. Thank you.
Thank you for telling us that, and we really appreciate you guys calling in. I know it's awkward to not be here in person, and so if there's anything I can do to, you know, make sure that you're not overlooked if you have comments that you want to make, I'll try to leave appropriate time for you to chime in, but be sure to let me know if there's something I could do to make that process a little smoother for you. All right. So as I said, there are reports there I'd recommend for your approval and review, including reports from Human Services, the auditor's account with the Treasurer for February 2020, and Minnehaha County Regional Juvenile Detention Center report for March. That takes us to personnel actions. I'd consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions.
So move. Benega?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Barr?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. That takes us to abatements recommended for approval. We had three abatements today. I don't know if there's going to be anybody here that was going to visit with us about the abatements. Okay. That's okay. Good morning, Chris.
Good morning, Commissioner. Sorry, you guys moved pretty fast this morning.
Yeah.
Yeah, before you today, we've got one, two, three, four, five, six abatements. The first three abatements are elderly freeze, which we've all been down that road. These are applicants that would have qualified for the elderly tax freeze but missed the deadline for one reason or another. So the first one is parcel number 40824 for 2019 pay 20. We're asking for $406.38. Parcel number 41457 for the 2019 pay 20 in the amount of $702.41, and parcel 11657 for the 2019 pay 20 taxes in the amount of $1,151.92. My office, we would recommend approval on these three.
Any questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion for approval.
Motion to approve the elderly freeze.
Second. Benega?
We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Barr?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
The next abatement is Brian and Becky Moore Living Trust. It's parcel number 13781 for the 2019 pay 20 taxes in the amount of $6,880.32. The issue with this one here is, is parents owned a big piece of land, let a child build a new house on that parcel of land, so all the value had to go on the parent parcel. Then they platted like an acre off for the child's house, and when we, when our office executed the plat, we split the land, but we failed to move the value of the house onto the, onto the child parcel. So working with them, they opted to do the abatement to the, to the parents' parcel, and we're doing an added tax to the child's parcel to get the taxes on the right parcel. I would recommend approval.
Commissioner Karski.
So the tax is being paid, just not by these people.
Correct. Yep. This is not really giving, this is giving back the tax bill to the parents, but we're going to add that tax bill to the, to the child with, that actually owns the house.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further comments, questions? Roll call vote, please.
Benega?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Barr?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
The next abatement is for Northwest District of the Wesleyan Church, parcel number 90876, again for the 2019 pay 20 property tax value. This is a property that was acquired after the application deadline and purchased, and they are exempt. I would recommend approval.
Any comments or questions? None.
Madam Chair, this is Jeff.
Commissioner Barr.
What are they using it for? What are they using this property for? Are they building a church there, cemetery? Is it just a vacant acreage?
No, let me look here. It's a, it's a church, and they are stating that they are using it as a church at 100% per their application.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Not, I'd entertain a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Karski?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Barr?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. All right. Takes us to item F.
Yep. The last one is an abatement request for V2 LLC, parcel number 91596, again for the 2019 pay 20 value. This one is clearly an office error. It was a transposition of numbers in the AS400, so when you put numbers into a program, it's pretty important where they go and which order, and they got transposed around, so the assessment went out almost double of what it should have been. So we're recommending the abatement for the amount of $300.87.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Barr?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Takes us to item seven, notices and requests. There are none. Item eight, planning and zoning notices. There are none. Takes us to item nine, petition for compromise of lien. Melinda Storley, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Melinda Storley, Commission Assistant. This request for compromise of lien, DPNO 46967, in the amount of $4,571.24, came before the Board on March 31, 2020. It was denied with a recommendation to the applicant that she submit a new application with an offer of payment and to provide further financial information. She asked that the original application remain and expressed that she's not responsible for any of the lien fees and that they are the responsibility of her ex-spouse, the lienee, and should remain in full against him in the, in that amount. I have confirmed that the debt on this lien was incurred by the lienee for poor relief and legal representation recorded from January 2002 to April 2019. She did provide the following documents: a marriage certificate between her and the lienee dated August 15, 2008, a financial roster from the divorce, her 2018-2019 income tax return, and an expanded narrative that she hopes will answer any of your questions. This petitioner was attempting to refinance her home due to hardship. The bank would not move forward without removing the lien from the property, and so she's asking for your consideration to compromise it, and compromise it only insofar as a real property for the address 2,204 South Crestwood Road, legally described as Lot 2 and Block 4 of Riverdale Addition to the City of Sioux Falls, Minnehaha County, South Dakota, according to the recorded plat thereof.
We had the same request a couple of weeks ago, and we really didn't have the narrative or have a good understanding of, we needed the picture painted. She did a good job of painting the picture, and I'm, I'm in favor of removing the lien from her and leaving it on her ex-spouse, and I think that would be the appropriate thing or the typical thing that we would do in a situation like this.
She's not listed on the lien, the, the individual, the other person listed on the lien is, actually, there is no other person listed on the lien. This is regarding the property that the lien is attached to only.
So the lien's on the property.
Yes, sir.
Can we move the lien to the other individual then?
The lien will remain with the lienee. The petitioner is the owner of the property and would like the lien removed from the property.
From the property, okay.
That's why she requested, only insofar as a real property.
Okay.
I'd be in support of removing the lien from the property and leaving it solely in the name of the person who incurred these costs.
I would, if that's a motion, I would second it.
Okay, that was a motion.
And then that's a second.
Motion and a second. Commissioners Barr or Benega, did either of you have any comments?
No, I'm fine.
Okay. All right. So we have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Barr?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. I think you have another one?
I do. I have a second lien. Lien DPNO 79164 in the amount of $13,860.40 represents attorney fees recorded in 2012 for a child and the petitioner. No payments have been made on the lien. The action requested today is to compromise and release the lien in full upon payment of $6,930.20, or 50% of the lien. He and his family have been living with his, with the parents of his current spouse in order to save money to pay off a judgment for the divorce from his former spouse on August 8, 2012, in the amount of $34,150. He was able to satisfy the judgment in full on February 24, 2020. But now he'd like to buy a home and has been pre-approved for a mortgage loan, however, there is no real estate transaction going on at this time. He has selected a home but is aware that the lien will interfere at closing and is hoping to eliminate the lien. Both he and his wife are employed and get paid every two weeks. They each earn approximately $1,500, and their 2019 income tax wages are recorded as $97,122, and the refund they received was $4,079. He has listed total assets of $74,299.95 and monthly liabilities totaling $3,458.58. He's not able to attend a day due to work conflict.
Comments or questions?
I guess the only comment I would have is these liens are eight years old, and we're getting an offer to pay at least half of them, and I, I am comfortable with forgiving the other half for the payment received. Just my opinion, my position.
Commissioner Heiburger.
Mine's more a comment than, than a position, although I think I do agree with you, is that this is the, the father, I'm assuming, that is applying for this, and he's willing to pay half of it? Where's the mother of this child? They were still married when this happened. Where's the mother in paying the other half?
Maggie.
And can we put that other half on the mother?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Madam Chair, that's correct. This, that you would have the option to leave half of the lien in place against the mother, accept the settlement, and then release it from the property. And so then you'd have the other half that, you know, ultimately could be collected. I know that on the printout of the DPNO, you'll see the certain type of case that this was, and the administrative officer had you double check to see very quickly what, what the circumstances of that case were. And but subject to that outcome, Madam Chair, you certainly have the option of doing that. Commissioner, accepting now and releasing it from the property and then leaving the other half against the box.
There is no property on this, is there?
Yes, there is.
I thought it was.
No, he's, he's attempting to purchase a home and needs to be able to have a clear title.
So it's just specifically against his name right now? Well, then I would still think we could put it against her name. It doesn't have to be in a property, so we could take half a payment from him and leave the, the remaining half in her name.
I'm sorry, Commissioner, I think this wasn't a lien dispute. There wasn't actual ownership. Just anticipated ownership.
Okay.
Wondering about the flavor for the other ways. I'll make, I'll just make a motion. I'll make a motion that we would remove it from the, the father or the applicant of this and leave the remaining half of it. I'm not sure if it's that 13,860 exactly what the half is, but reme, remove, leave the remaining half on the mother of this child, and she can deal with her half at another point. Olivia, your question.
Motion?
Motion.
Can I ask? Yes. Clarification on the motion, so you're stating that you're going to accept his payment and then just leave the rest on the mother? Thank you.
So we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'd second that.
Let Gerald have it.
Commissioner Benega seconded. Any further discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Benega?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Barr?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. So that takes us to opportunity for public comment. If there's somebody here would like to speak about something that's not on the agenda? All right. Since we have a sparse crowd, it's not shocking we don't have public comment. So that takes us to regular business. And item 10 is to issue a proclamation recognizing May 3 through May 9 as National Correctional Officers and Employees Week in honor of the Minnehaha County staff from the Juvenile Detention Center and the jail. Jamie Gravitt and Warden Mattson, good morning.
Good morning. As you know, correctional staff at both the Juvenile Detention Center and the jail are a very dedicated and professional group who work hard to protect our community while safely trying to help those in our care. It's been even more evident during the current pandemic, and we're very proud of them. They do this 24/7 with little or no outside recognition from the public. We appreciate the praise that we've previously received from this Board, and we ask that you approve this proclamation.
One of you gets to read it. Who wants to read the proclamation?
I can do it. I don't have it.
Okay.
I don't have it either.
There it is.
Can you read it off the board?
Sure, I can. Whereas Minnehaha County is committed to public safety through professional service, correctional officers and employees are some of the most resourceful, committed, patient, and persistent professionals, essential to the day-to-day operations of our jail and juvenile detention center. And whereas corrections officers and employees have tremendous responsibility and are often overlooked or underappreciated and frequently scrutinized, they continue to perform their duties honorably, with great pride, and with deep understanding of the challenges within the profession. Yet they continue to excel under the most difficult of circumstances. And whereas corrections officers and employees are trained professionals to get, dedicated to maintain safe correctional facilities and are responsible for the custody, care, and rehabilitation of thousands of offenders every year. They serve admirably in many different capacities, including jail administrators, wardens, supervisors, correctional system operators, administration, and corrections officers. Whereas corrections officers and employees who currently serve in corrections, those who have served and those who have been injured and lost in pursuit of this most honorable profession deserve recognition for their service and should be commended by the leaders of, in this profession, the public, and our elected officials for their tremendous and exceptional performance of duties. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Minnehaha County Commission do hereby proclaim May 3 through May 9, 2020, as National Corrections Officer and Employees Week, and encourage all members and citizens to recognize the growing need for services and dedicate, dedicated professional personnel within the jail and juvenile detention center.
Thank you. Any comments?
Thank you.
I would just deal with what Jamie said. Our people are fantastic, and especially right now. They've really stepped up.
And I'd have to say that when I came on the commission, your area of the world was something I knew very little about, which I was actually kind of thankful for, that I hadn't had any personal experiences with me or my kids. But it is really humbling to see how hard you guys work and to see how your staff has stepped up, particularly now when going to work is dangerous, even more dangerous than it has been in the past. And you guys have worked really, really hard to keep everybody safe and healthy, and I know it's been a couple of tough weeks for you guys, so I really appreciate it.
They're, they're the ones on the front line and doing the work, so they get the credit.
You all get the credit, all of you, so. All right.
Thank you.
With that, I'd take a motion.
Move approval of the proclamation.
I hear.
Second. Benega?
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Karski?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Barr?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
All right. That takes us to item 11, which is to consider a resolution declaring a fire danger emergency in Minnehaha County and prohibiting open burning. Jason Gierman, Emergency Management, another really busy guy. Thanks for being over here today.
No problem. Jason Gierman, Emergency Management. I'm here on behalf of the fire chiefs, real fire chiefs, and this is to consider a resolution for a burn ban. Recently, there have been several fires out in Minnehaha County that have caused some significant damage to buildings. I think there's been at least three structures lost. With the dry weather that we've had, which is unusual from the past several years, and of course, we have high winds in South Dakota, it's really causing a problem for the fire departments, especially when these occur during the daytime when they're at work and they've got to break away from work. And also due to the, the COVID situation, they've adjusted some of their policies on how they respond. Instead of multiple people jumping in one rig, they'll take separate apparatus out to these situations, which requires extra time when you come back to clean them, disinfect them, and so on. And a lot of these fires that they're dealing with involve mutual aid, so multiple departments will show up, which can leave another department short if they have a fire in their area when they're dealing with it over here. And in their efforts to social distance, they don't want to be, have the big groups together. So they think that, and they think and I support that it's probably necessary for a fire ban on burning, on open burning, to reduce their call numbers so they can keep up with what they need to keep up with and respond to a potential other emergencies. Anything else in there that? And they did want to add that, you know, it's not necessarily, there's a high amount of these right now, but it's just with all the circumstances involved that, you know, they would like to request this.
Commissioner Heiburger.
I'm not going to support it. We had a little bit of rain this last week, and we've got three more days forecasted of rain this week. I would be interested in looking at it again at our next meeting, but I understand their reasoning, but I feel like everything we're doing is shutting down on people, and I think that we need to be, as citizens, we need to be responsible citizens, and if your yard is dry, then you shouldn't be burning. And I don't think it needs the government to tell you, you can't burn. I think we all need to be responsible, and so I'm not going to support it. I would be interested in looking at it again at two weeks and see if we've had a significant amount of rain. With three days in the forecast, that just makes me think that we need to wait.
And I would point out, and I'd answer, ask if this is, my understanding was, we debated this last week a little bit, when weather forecasts were not the same. We have to publish on Friday to have something heard on the following Tuesday. We had thought about holding off, and then on Friday, the fire chiefs did a poll where they, they called around and called, talked to all the fire chiefs. There'd been multiple fires last week, I think. They, the clerks that had to respond to four in one day, and we've done burn bans in the past, and so at that point, they were asking, it was unanimous of the fire chiefs, that we have a burn ban put into place, and it was, while COVID was part of the reason, it was really the fact that there were so many fires and that they, they felt that it was really, really dry at that point. This week, the forecast looks a little bit different, but it was a uniform request of all of the fire chiefs based on the weather conditions at the time. Is that correct?
Yes. I spoke with, it's been several days, I spoke with Todd Hyde Camp from the National Weather Service, and we are in a dry pattern right now. We are going to get some rain. Out of how significant that's going to be, we've had some showers this morning, kind of scattered throughout the area, so definitely something to consider.
Commissioner Karski.
Is the ban for any specific period of time? I mean, do we, how does that work?
Well, this is one of the first times I've, I've been up here to do this, and I'm assuming it's, it's, it's a, there's a cutoff date where you would have to either continue continue the resolution or continue the ban, or it would just automatically shut off. But I'm not sure about that.
The way it's drafted, it says until we rescind it. I mean, I think if we wanted to make an amendment this morning and put it in place for two weeks and revisit it at our next meeting in two weeks, I think that would be one option we could look at as well.
Would it, would the ban be effective immediately if we approved it?
That's how it's drafted.
Okay. And I would like to see a sunset on it, I guess. You know, we need to have a time when it's done. And I, in two weeks, I think would be appropriate. So I, I'd be in favor of approving this with the condition or with the whereas added that it would be for, from now until, what would it be?
Our next meeting is on May 12.
From now until May 12, yeah.
Commissioners Barth or Benega, do either of you have any comments?
Madam Chair, this is Jeff. I'm sorry, Jeff. I just know that Mike Harst, the Crooks Chief, called me last week about this and they had 18 fires by Friday of last week. And I went for a ride this weekend and I saw a, where there had been a grass fire near our highway department on 60th Street North. And it was a steep ravine where obviously anybody going in there to try to put out the fire could easily be injured. And the fact is that you have the freedom to start fires, but you don't have freedom to let them go. And that's what's been happening. Mike said that people are burning off their water runoff areas and it gets out of control and they don't call the fire department. And again, every time we deploy our equipment and our personnel, we're putting people at risk for one reason or another. And we've done this in the past and we've had a couple sprinkles since it was first suggested. And maybe this kind of resolution could act as a virtual rain dance and bring on some substantial rain. I bet the farmers would like that too. But I, I think that putting it in for two weeks won't hurt anyone dramatically. And if anyone has another problem, I would recommend they work with their fire department to see how they could accomplish their mission.
I think Commissioner Benega wanted to say something and then Commissioner Karski. Commissioner Benega?
Thank you. Since we have a unanimous support of the rural firefighters and frankly, the emergency management people, I think it would be a good idea for us to put the sunset on for a couple of weeks and see what happens. I don't really want to put firefighters in any additional work just because of the coronavirus hassle that we're all dealing with. And more importantly, the firefighters are the experts and I think we should give them that pause, if you will, to maybe be able to take a breather from some of the activities they've had to deal with. So I would support this. In fact, I'll second the motion.
I'm not sure what the motion was, but was it to, it was to adopt it with a two-week expiration on May 12?
Correct.
Okay, sorry. Commissioner Karski, did you have a follow-up comment?
Yeah, I know from talking to an egg farmer just yesterday, he said the top four inches of the soil are extremely dry. So I understand why they're looking at this. And my motion would be that to approve this resolution and to change the last sentence under the be it further resolved, that it shall continue in force until May 12.
Okay. That's acceptable.
That's exactly what I was seconding.
Perfect. I love when you guys read each other's mind. All right, so we have a motion in a second. Are there any other comments? Roll call vote, please.
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes four to one. All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, so now we have a brief presentation from the Minnehaha County Sheriff's Office. This is part of our regularly scheduled presentations from every area of the county as we prepare for budgeting seasons coming up in May. But I think Sheriff Milstead is on the phone and I'm guessing a lot of his presentation is going to deal with COVID-related issues that they have been working tirelessly on. Sheriff Milstead, are you there?
I am here. Can you hear me, commissioners?
Perfect. Yes.
Sounds good. Commissioner Bender, as you said, COVID-19 has really changed what we're doing. So I, I didn't want to do a brief, a briefing on the sheriff's office without making that probably the major part. So although I was reminded yesterday by Captain Bosman that budget season is upon us again and so the world goes on and we're, you know, starting to work with our budget for next year and as you will be dealing with in the near future. So in addition to all of our normal statutory duties, COVID-19 has really transformed the way all of our divisions are doing business. You know, it's impacted a lot of what we do. For instance, with the deputy sheriffs out on patrol, what their priorities need to be now, what they need to focus on, and, and limiting their contact with individuals and dealing with, you know, more cases of mental health crisis, dealing with more cases involving domestic assaults and domestic abuse. You know, people who are very close, for some families, that's a wonderful thing. For families that aren't so close, to be close like they have to be right now, sometimes doesn't work out too well. And so as a result, we do see, you know, domestic cases go up. We see, you know, tense moments and not only because maybe they're, they're struggling with a relationship, but it could also be that, you know, they're struggling financially. They've lost their job, they're drawing, maybe even drawing unemployment, something they never thought that they would try or have to do. They may be struggling with having hogs that they don't know where they're, what they're going to do with them. And so there's a lot of tension. There's a lot of sleepless nights that occur in our, in our community and people can be on edge. And so our patrol officers are, try to be as helpful as they can and focus on the priorities that, that are statute and that is, you know, preserving, you know, preservation of life and the protection of, of life and property. So I mean, they need to focus on what their primary duty is. You know, we started in the preparation stage a long time ago, getting additional personal protective equipment, PPE supplies, implementing proactive policies, monitoring trends and information that changed, it seems like by the hour. You know, there's, this is unprecedented. And, and in our business where we typically have a lot of, you know, you can look it up in the statute or you can look it up in the policy book, these things change now every day, the way, you know, in the face of this virus, how we have to respond, how we protect our officers, how we protect the public, what the, if you ever sat in any of my staff meetings, you'd know that I'm always pushing for three words and that's to do, it's the right thing. I want to do the right thing, but it's not always easy to know what the right thing is in this environment. So we do our best based on the information at hand and that information seems to change almost daily. You know, we get key information now from Metro Communications to help our patrol deputies respond to calls for service. So if they know that there's a COVID-positive individual that they're responding to, they know how to properly gear up with their personal protective equipment. And then we also have a decontamination process for patrol officers who do get contaminated or have close contact with a COVID-positive patient. As you recall, your deputy sheriffs, many of them are emergency medical technicians because of the shortage of EMTs out in the county. So they also perform medical service calls and, and as a result, there is that increased risk of exposure. So we have to have a plan for decontamination. We have that with, with, in particular with Sioux Falls Fire Rescue, a great partner. And as you know, in our unified command and our EOC operations, which is right below my office, and Commissioner Bender is a regular participant in those meetings every day, a lot of this is just coordinated effort. So I don't have to have my own decontamination process that's provided by Sioux Falls Fire Rescue. So we're, we share services and we, and we coordinate our efforts. The same for officers that would be exposed to PPAE, or excuse me, officers that would be exposed to coronavirus, like a close exposure or, and not want to go home and possibly expose his family or, you know, maybe, maybe he lives with his parents, maybe he's got two kids and a wife at home. But if they were uncomfortable going home and trying to quarantine at home, we work with the EOC to develop housing for those officers to be able to stay away from home if they needed to during their, during a period of quarantine. Our civil division stays as busy as ever. Unfortunately, there are still a lot of protection orders that need to be served, judgments, executions, warrants, evictions. We, we reestablished our fingerprint services that we had shut down. Public printing is really important for people in particular that are applying for positions in the medical field. So we reopen focusing on those, you know, the medical applicants for, for jobs. So we have staff that wears PPE and performs that. When we schedule it, so we don't end up with a line of people waiting for fingerprinting. So we schedule it like you schedule a doctor's appointment. We, we are noticing, and I've been talking with the state's attorney, Crystal Johnson, a significant increase in failure to appear in court. A lot of people who are being arrested on felonies and misdemeanor are not showing up in court. What, what does that mean? It just means that down the road, we're going to have a pile of warrants that are going to have to be served because these are individuals who are accused of a crime, set a court date, and they're not showing up. And so we will see as this, it'll be a little like the commission, your agenda will be very lengthy, I'm sure, once this is over because of things that you're having to push back. And then all of a sudden, we're going to be swamped in particular with service of warrants, which means bringing additional people to jail. The, it was fitting that today's National Correctional Officer Employees and Employees Week. I think about the hard work that the men and women are performing for the county across, at the county jail. It's, they're, they're performing a very difficult function right now. Commissioner Bender, you just said that, you know, going to work is dangerous for them and that nothing could be, I mean, that's absolutely spot on. These officers not only face danger in their daily duty, they took the job knowing that it's a dangerous one, but now they have that unseen danger of coronavirus, which we have had in, in our jail. And so it has affected, a number of our officers have been positive COVID. And, you know, we, we, you know, we look forward to their, to speedy recovery, but knowing that their coworkers have been exposed, knowing that their coworkers have tested positive, makes it even more difficult when they get up in the morning or they get up, they get ready in the evening and put their correctional officer uniform on and head into the environment that they're, that they're, they've, you know, taken a sworn oath to uphold and defend and, and that's their job. And I am so impressed at the level of participation and, and showing up for work when they need to be at work and, and the staff are just doing a great job. And I just, you know, they're just doing an incredible job over there. You know, in our jail, it's, we're continuing to see an increase of individuals arrested who have either tested positive or they've been exposed to someone who tests positive. And so, and there are those who are not symptomatic, but they are positive for the virus. That's, it's kind of the, kind of a blessing and a curse that people can carry COVID without having any symptoms at all. Because we screen people when they are, we screen our staff as they come to work. We screen people when they come in, when they're brought in by the police department or sheriff's office, highway patrol. We screen them, but if they show no symptoms, you know, they're, they're eventually moved into a general housing area. Well, they, they could be positive COVID and a case like that can spread. We, even though we've reduced significantly the number of bookings by adjusting, working with the presiding circuit judge and the state's attorney, the police chief and our staff, we've reduced the number of charges that people come to jail on, we're still booking in probably 50, 60 people every day. And so we've got a high volume coming through, some symptomatic, some not. So, so that makes it pretty tough to get appropriate housing for them. The varying levels of exposure, they place a real challenge and demand on the jail system where we need to accommodate the needs of the individual inmates and ensure the, the safety of the inmates and the staff. So when we have somebody, you know, when, when the phone rings and booking and they said, there's a police officer en route with a COVID-positive felon that needs to go to jail, we can't say no. So we, we accept that prisoner. We have, we, we work with the CDC guidelines. We follow recommendations from the Department of Health, who have been great partners in helping us as we develop the different preventative measures that we take in our correctional setting. But, but we know we're receiving people who are COVID-positive into our jail. We happen to be a hotspot in the, in the state and, and some of these people get arrested. And so we just have to be able to deal with them and that's a challenge for the correctional staff, it's a challenge for our medical staff. But they're, they're up to the challenge and they're doing, and you know, I will say they're doing, you know, a fantastic job. You know, Jason Gierman, our emergency manager that you, you're on a regular basis, it's, you know, it's a little bit of baptism by fire. It seems like as soon as he got the job, we started having, you know, severe weather and tornadoes and, and floods and then, and now COVID. But he's doing a great job of representing and helping to coordinate sheriff's office activities with the city and county. And my command staff is, they're top shelf employees anyway, as the rest of my staff are, but they're, they've already taken on the task to make sure that we get through this successfully. So I don't want to go much further, but I, I will say that if I didn't have the kind of staff that I have, I don't think we would be able to provide the level of service that we are. But I've got top shelf people doing what they, what they know to do and, and, and recognizing their, you know, they're in public service and their job is public safety and they take their job very seriously. Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the sheriff?
Jane, this is Jeff, Sheriff.
Commissioner Barrie.
Yes, sir. Mr. Sheriff, what's the situation for you getting testing done on the folks that you're bringing in? I recognize that you can screen them for symptoms, but that's, it's not the same as doing the swabs and all that kind of stuff. Do you have the ability to test people as much as you need to?
We, we like to follow and have regular contact with the South Dakota Department of Health and we listen to what they say. And right now, their recommendation is not to test people that are, if they're not symptomatic. But we have inmates that become symptomatic or come in symptomatic and we do have the ability to have them tested and it's done on, on almost a daily basis that we have individuals that get tested.
Thank you.
I will add, Commissioner Barth and, and the commissioners as well, we had several weeks ago ordered cloth masks for both employees and inmates. And as of yesterday, all of the inmates in the facility are, have cloth masks that they, they're required to wear. And, and that's just another preventative step. I've never, we have not authorized previously the use of alcohol-based hand sanitizer in the jail. That changed this week as well, that we'll be, we'll, we'll have correctional officers who will have that hand sanitizer. And then, for example, when inmates come back from rec, from rec, they'll get a squirt on their hands. When inmates come out to have breakfast or lunch or dinner, they'll get, have a chance to use hand sanitizer. And then we encourage significant washing of your hands, actually just washing your hands is better than hand sanitizer with soap and water. So we certainly encourage that as well. So there's a lot of steps and our, and our staff have been wearing masks as well. So we're doing the best that we can to try to reduce the number of times we have positive cases in the jail. But we will continue to have positive cases in the jail until, until our community doesn't have positive cases.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for the sheriff? Are there any other questions for the sheriff? We really appreciate you taking the time to be with us this morning. I know you guys have been working tirelessly, not only to maintain your normal business operations and keep residents of Minnehaha County safe and secure, but also in dealing with all these additional challenges that you have with the, with the jail population and, and with your folks out on the, mingling with everyone here in Minnehaha County. So thank you very much. Thank you to you and all of your staff. I think one thing that we can take with confidence are your statements that your, your staff are all top shelf because that, they have really shined in, in this really challenging time. So thank you very much.
Thank you, commissioners.
Commissioner Heiburger.
I just have one comment. Sheriff mentioned that the, we've had an awful lot of failures to appear. Is there, I mean, I, I recognize that's going to happen, but is there any possibility that some of those people don't understand that the courthouse is still open? You just have to come with a mask. And so I wonder if some of those might be due to that. We've just changed protocols and when they hear the administration building is building, is closed, so many people equate that to the same building.
Right. And it doesn't hurt, it's never hurt. Can't do too many reminders. We've tried to be clear that the courthouse has remained open and like everything else, protocols have changed over time at the courthouse, but the courthouse is still open. And we certainly encourage people to make their appearances and show up for court to, your life doesn't get easier when you don't show up, it just gets harder. So we really encourage folks to do that. All right. Anything else? Thank you for that comment. So that takes us to item 13, which is to consider a motion to authorize the sheriff's office to sign the continuation of original contract with the Network for Domestic Violence Grant Funding. Officer Phillips. Josh Phillips, are you on the line?
I am. Good morning, commissioners. Josh Phillips, can you hear me okay?
We can, yes, thank you.
Yes. All right. Just looking for a continuation to authorize the sheriff's office to sign a original contract with the Network Domestic Violence Grant Funding. This is a program that was in place from 2017 to 2019. It's Health Fund and F T E in our Detective Division. And that individual is assigned domestic violence cases and sexual assaults, works closely with the network and, and does other community events with them. Just looking for your approval to sign that continuation. And that will go from today's date till September 30th, 2022.
Any comments or questions for Captain Phillips?
Move approval.
Second. Motion and a second. Any other comments? Obviously, as the sheriff said, this is an issue that is only becoming more important, not less important unfortunately in our society. So roll call vote, please.
Barre.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Heiburger.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. That takes us to item 14.
Thank you.
Orders the chair to sign an agreement between the city of Sioux Falls and Minnehaha County to hold a joint election on June 2nd, 2020 and consider a resolution to hold a combined election between the county and the joint city of Sioux Falls, Sioux Falls School District. Auditor Litz, good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. Bob Litz from the auditor's office. This memo is a request to approve two items today. The items were made necessary due to the passage of House Bill 1298 on veto day, March 30, 2020. The bill's final form allowed for the city of Sioux Falls and Sioux Falls School District election. It was originally scheduled for March 14th in 2020, to be rescheduled to a later date. City Clerk's Office approached the auditor's office about conjoining elections and it was tentatively agreed to hold the elections in conjunction on June 2nd, 2020. City and the county updated the operating agreement that defines responsibilities and expenses to the respective entities. The results of that effort resulted in the creation of an ordinance by the city of Sioux Falls that seeks approval by the county, county commission of two actions. Number one would be to approve the updated operating agreement that defines the responsibilities and expense allocation of the city and the county in performance of the set election. And number two, to approve the, approve moving of the city school election date from April 14th, 2020 to June 2nd, 2020, the date the primary election will be held on. I'm requesting approval of the resolution, which contains the items necessary to approve the election agreement and to allow combining of the two elections.
Any questions for the auditor? Commissioner Karski.
This is going to be fascinating to see how you do this, Bob, because if I'm, if I'm a Republican and I'm voting in a primary, I get one ballot and I'm also get a different ballot for the school board and another ballot for the city council. Will there be three boxes for me to put my ballots in then?
No, you know, the, the word combined has been kind of bandied about a little bit, but in my book, when you're combining an election, that means you have one ballot with everything on it. What's going to happen when you walk into a precinct, and I'm glad you asked this question, you will have, there will be a check-in desk for the city school election. That's one ballot. And then the primary election will have another ballot. So if you want to vote in both of them, you'll have to go check in at both places. The reason we did that was because before this election got moved in veto day, because Tom already had his ballots and boy, we had the polling places, you know, he'd basically laid out this election previously. And so we, the good part about that was we were able to identify some, some bottlenecks and some problems, you know, that I'm dealing with today. But that's why that's like that. So when you go to the polling place, you want to vote, vote on both of those items, you'll have to check in twice.
Okay. Separate line or vote and then?
Nope. As you come through there, the, the tables will be right there. One will say city and the other will say county and take your choice or hit both of them or none of them if, if you don't want to do that.
You're already doing absentee.
We are doing absentee and the city has, has, you know, been extended their absentee period from before their, their old election date up till this. And their absentee period will, will end when ours does on June 1st. And so, you know, as of today, the primary request, we've had about 4,000 of them and we still got a month to go. And, you know, over a month to go, normally that's what our number is for a primary, if it's interesting. And then I would describe this primary as, you know, it doesn't have, it has one senate race, it has a secretary of states, or not secretary of states, but the state's attorney race on it. And the Democrats don't have a ballot really at all. I mean, there's going to be a ballot there for the Democrats, but it's between Biden and Sanders, which is a moot race. So, you know, it's not, it's not one of these races that is, everybody's focused, I mean, an election that everybody's focusing a lot on. There's no mayor, there's no, you know, there's nothing big now. The big one in, in, in November 3rd, that's, that's going to be a different case. That'll be a big election with a lot of interest in it. But I would describe that. So the primary at 4,000 requests and we've also got the city absentee requests at 3,700. So the number of absentees we've had pouring in down there, literally baskets of them ever since the state took their action. And incidentally, I'm, I'm really glad that the state did take the action to send that out because it means less people are going to turn up polling place on election day, less exposure for everybody. So I, I think that's a good thing. You know, I'll just leave that at that, okay?
Other questions for Auditor Litz?
Madam Chair, this is Jeff here.
Commissioner Barre.
Bob, what about poll workers? How are you doing with getting people to work the ballots?
Well, you know, we're about half into it now and I've, I've gotten a lot of people to step up, but it's been, you know, probably a, every other one, you know, feels like they can't work. And so we've reached out and, and done some special things for contacting people. And at the end of the day, you know, the bigger precincts, normally for a primary, I would just have three people, but I think for the bigger ones, we've got to have four because of the two check-in desk thing. There's some of the smaller precincts, we'll get by with three there. But it's, it's been tough, Mr. Barth, I would tell you that. And I would like to appeal to the public, you know, if you're out there and kind of looking for something to do on election day and, and you, you're willing to do this, to contact my office because we will certainly consider it, we'll explain everything to you. We've also got some precautions for the COVID virus. I've got two plastic shields that will be protecting the check-in desks from, from the public and vice versa. We also, I've got two of these, they're sanitation kits is what I call them. They've got a big bucket of wipes and, and some other things like, you know, pads for the hearing on the, on the ADA machines. There, there's a host of things in there, including gloves. And then I've also asked the city of Sioux Falls for 500 masks. The masks are hard to get, but they'll have gloves, masks. And, and then also what I, what I'm getting made is, is there a stop sign with four arrows on it and it says social distancing on them. And so we're sending those out to the polling place and they can tape them to the floor or the wall, wherever they want people to queue up at. And we'll remind people that social distancing is, is still in effect.
Thank you. Other questions? You are, you are another person who's been working tirelessly and, and pivoting as new information comes available and dealing with really challenging circumstances. So we appreciate the work that you've been doing.
And thank you for that, Commissioner. And I have to give somebody down in my office special recognition. Heather Irwin has just been outstanding with these absentees that have come in and everything else that's on her plate at this time. So I did want to say something about her.
All right. Thank you. If there are no other questions, I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Second, Benega.
So we have a motion and a second. And the resolution authorizes the chair to sign the agreement, so that's, so we're good there. All right. Roll call vote, please.
Benega.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Heiburger.
Aye.
Barre.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. All right. So that takes us to item 15, which is to consider a resolution approving the combined election between Minnehaha County and the Baltic, Garrettson and West Central School Districts. Auditor Litz.
Once again, I am seeking approval of a resolution that allows combining of the school districts of Baltic, Garrettson and West Central School Districts to share certain precincts within the Minnehaha County primary election on June 2nd, 2020. The action is a requirement of the House Bill 1298 that allowed the moving or combining of the local election dates. That was advised by our state's attorney and I also agreed that any interpretation of the law, if we're going to combine elections in Minnehaha County, has to be approved by the commission. There's no need to address the expenses as each entity will be responsible for their own election cost. Staffing of each entity's election is treated separately. The, the county and the school districts have agreed that the school ballots will be on pink paper for differentiation to the county's white ballots. Size of the ballots will also be a notable difference between the ballots and it's important for voters not to confuse the ballot boxes when they're returning the voted ballot. Action today, the action that I'm looking for today is approval of resolution, M C 20, I didn't have a date on it, so, but the resolution that's attached here.
Commissioner Heiburger.
Just a question. I, I spoke yesterday with the Tri Valley School District who is not doing this and their reasoning, from my understanding, was that there were no available precincts on the south side, or on the north side of Sioux Falls for the south part of their district to be able to participate in this election. Since their district is so long and stretched out, there was no place for the people that live on the north side of Sioux Falls to participate if they did it that way. Do we not have any precincts up in that area?
You know, the, you know, I've been thinking about this because the, the Crooks area in particular has been kind of problematic in getting folks from that community to step up and run their elections. I've had a lot of Sioux Falls people out there over the years. You know, so as I think about it, you know, the, the closest precinct probably is down the road in Renner at the fire hall down there. We've got, we've got a fire, we've got a precinct in Crooks itself. There's one in, in Colton, there's one in Hartford. So, you know, that, also Baltic would, would be the, you know, one of the fairly close ones. It's just a, you know, it's really a big, kind of an unwieldy district. And, you know, I think that the, part of it, you know, the school districts are one thing, but, you know, and ours, as far as cutting that up, you know, I've had various schemes that I've thought about in my head for cutting it up for the county, but then we're a year away from redistricting at the legislature and I thought it was really going to be confusing to people to, you know, roll out a bunch of new lines for a precinct and then change them again two years later. So my option was to wait for the legislature. Is there an answer for that? I think the school board, the county and would have to kind of come together and look at some things. I'd certainly be willing to do that, but I didn't hear that. But, you know, Crooks was, Crooks is a place that the county has an election at and I, it was my understanding that is going to be used for a precinct, for the school, so.
Yes. It was just the people on the south side of Sioux Falls.
Yes, that's correct.
Or not the south side, the north side of Sioux Falls, south of the district, yes.
That's correct.
Any other questions? All right. I'd entertain a motion.
This is Jeff. I'll move approval.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second. Benega.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Karski.
Aye.
Heiburger.
Aye.
Barre.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Takes us to item 16, which is to-
Madam Chair, this is Jeff. I, I just want to make a quick comment. I think this is going to be one of Bob's most complicated elections ever with all these jurisdictions and these odd ballots. It's, good luck, Bob.
Thank you. Appreciate that, Commissioner.
We, we all are going to do everything we can to keep you really healthy through that election, so. All right. So that takes us to item 16, which is to consider a resolution to approve a property tax payment proposed for record 041066.
As, as Commissioner Bender just said, I've been working with that property owner, 41066, R D I D 41066, to create a payment plan for back taxes and penalties in the amount of $1,876.02 from 2015 through 2019. And, and the reason that, you know, for a four-year period that this is not an amount is they actually own two lots. And the house that they live in, the folks that live in, that is current, but there's a lot right next door, they had a mobile home on it, was, was destroyed by a fire. And so those property taxes are actually for the lot that is contiguous to the place that they live in. And I've discussed it with them, the amount isn't that great and they've agreed to the amount to pay it. And I'd like to give them a chance, so I'm seeking approval of this resolution.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any questions? I think we all really appreciate you working with taxpayers to try to get tax plans like this put in place. So we have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Heiburger.
Aye.
Barre.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate your support on these items.
All right. Item 17, we have an update on the Minnehaha County parks from Scott Anderson. This is an update from our last commission meeting. It's another area where things continue to evolve.
Good morning, Commissioner. Scott Anderson, Planning Director and Parks Director. And two weeks ago, we had a good discussion on some of the issues that we're facing with our county parks. And I have continued to work on this. As we know, on Friday, the governor extended the stay-at-home order for people over 65 and at risk. And as you know, the majority of my park staff is over 65. So we, so I've been examining other alternatives on what we can do. And I have worked, I, I've reached out to Scott Wick, I've also reached out to a private contractor. And I had, on Friday, I met with the private contractor at Wall Lake. We walked through the entire property. I indicated to him, I, I showed him sort of the minimum area that we could mow, that would need to be mowed. And I, I do have a map that I can pass out to you and if you'd like show on the, on the overhead. I got a very, very competitive bid from that business and they would not be any kind of a contract, very willing to work with us on an as-needed basis. And that would address only the mowing at Wall Lake. I've taken care of the mowing at Booker Prairie. That's a little, it's a horse of a different color basically because it's really, it's just walking trails, it doesn't really attract groups of people like Wall Lake. It's pretty much, you know, you're there, you can park, you can walk yourself around. The bathrooms, I have opened up on Booker Prairie, it was chained up, the driveway and the parking lot. I opened that up last week as I indicated in my memo, which was basically just taking down the, the barriers to the parking lot. The bathrooms, I have not opened up yet at Booker Prairie. Those are, the bathrooms there, if you're not familiar with them, they don't, there's not running water there. It's only, it's what we would call a vault privy in the old, so basically it just is a holding tank that you can use and we pump those out. If I want to open those up, I'm going to have to purchase, acquire some of the hand sanitizers if someone wants to use it so they can get in there and sanitize their hands because there's no running water. And that's one of- And that's one of the things that I'm going to have to probably accomplish or to get those hand sanitizer dispensers and somehow install them in the two bathrooms there. So would you like me to hand these out to you? I did make copies of the map, because the contractor, if we want to move ahead with this, sort of wanted an idea of exactly the area that is going to be mowed. So what would you like?
I think you could just show it on the overhead. That'd be sufficient. That way, every, the other commissioners can see it.
All right. I'm hopeful that in two weeks, or maybe even a little bit longer, we will, the stay-at-home order will be rescinded or expired and not renewed. And we can move ahead with deciding what we want to do with our park staff. So at this point, I'm here to discuss what you'd like to do. And answer any questions that you have.
Commissioner Heiburger.
I'd like to see you open the vaulted bathrooms. I think it's personal responsibility to carry your own hand sanitizer. I would say probably most people are now either carrying hand sanitizer or wipes in their car.
Okay.
And I think a big sign should go on the outside of the bathrooms and maybe at the park. I think the museum makes signs that say, you know, there is no hand sanitizer. You are to use personal responsibility and realize that these bathrooms are not cleaned. I think people are taking personal responsibility, and I think that we need to insist that people take personal responsibility. The government should not be taking care of people to the level that we are. And so they need to start to step up. Now we've showed the way, time to start to step up.
I would just say that, I mean, I think that there is, and I think this is a healthy and a good debate about personal responsibility. And, but at the same time, all employers have employees. They need to be taking care of their employees. People who have businesses and buildings that are open to the public need to make them appropriate for public use. And the county's no different in that respect. So I also am in favor of trying to get these bathrooms open. I would like to keep the parks the way they are in the sense that, you know, at Wall Lake, we're not trying to invite large groups of people there. We'd like them to be open for people to utilize the outdoors responsibly, remain appropriately socially distanced. And, I mean, this is a difficult issue. I mean, I know the state is keeping state parks open, but not opening any comfort stations or any facilities. And if you don't open facilities, you create other problems, and which are certainly not any better than the issues that you're dealing with when you do open them. I mean, I would like them open. I would like to have hand sanitizer available in the bathrooms. I agree, people do need to have personal responsibility. They need to stay socially distanced. I think there's some real fatigue about that right now. And I think that the folks with the data and the science would tell you that we need to keep that up for, you know, certainly the next month, when the surge in Sioux Falls is set to hit. And so I think because we own those buildings and we are opening them to the public, that we have some responsibility to get some hand sanitizer in there, if we can, do it on a responsible basis. Commissioner Karski.
I guess I agree completely with opening that up. And I'm just curious, okay, the map we see there, does the county own the entire beach? I mean, is that truly our property?
Yeah.
Okay.
The sandy beach that you see is owned by the county. And it basically runs all the way over to the west where that very nice large house is. We own that, all of that property.
Okay.
I guess historically, back in the thirties, twenties, there was a gigantic water slide out there in the middle of the lake. It was quite a, there was like a pavilion there, and so it burned down. But, so now the Elmo is up. I will, the area in the red is the minimal amount of area that I would like to see that we need to have mowed. And it's around the existing picnic shelters and trees and whatnot. I'm going to slide this a little bit down. So you can see that there's a semicolon of trees there. So basically, that semicolon of trees all the way to the north that runs along that shelter belt to our property, that's all maintained by the Girl Scouts, and that's in their contract that they need to mow, et cetera. So that's why you see that mowing shows the area that we are responsible for. The only area that I'm not mowing, there's a large field area that you can see where those lines go back and forth. It's from, had been mowed. That I'm just going to let go. If we need to, we can hire a farmer at a later date and just come in and cut it with a farm equipment and bale it if we need to. It's not going to be very good hay, and it'll be difficult to get maybe someone to do that, but it's doable. But this is the area that I would like to, that I need to start mowing. Otherwise, that grass is not going to bounce back like that field grass. So, and we've had a couple shots of rain. It's warming up, and I was out there last Friday. It's going to need to be mowed starting next week.
Commissioner Heiburger.
On the part that we wouldn't mow, Scott, the field, would we be responsible to make sure we spray if we have thistles or anything coming? So something else that we need to keep in mind is that it'll have to probably be sprayed.
We would. And as Commissioner Bender indicated, if you don't open up the bathrooms, and at this point, we can't open up the bathrooms at Wall Lake, because we don't have water there yet. And I'm going to have to hire someone to, or figure out what we want to do to get water running if we open up the bathrooms. City parks are not opening up their bathrooms. So just that is an FYI. But, see, I lost my train of thought here. Anyway, oh, the host of problems. What we're seeing, people are out there using it. I was out there on Friday, people putting piles of garbage right on our signs that say, please pack out your garbage. And the other issue is people going behind buildings and relieving themselves. And there's several of that, and that's very unpleasant to see and unhealthy. So we-
So, I mean, as Commissioner Heiburger has said several times already today, we all do have an obligation to take care of it for our, for everybody. I mean, we need to use personal responsibility and think about others when we're out using any public areas. And if people are not able to do that, then we are going to have to relook at whether we are going to be able to keep that open. That goes for people who are using the beach. You know, we had a couple of really nice days this week. That's very attractive. But if we start having problems out there with people not respecting social distancing, not respecting the use of that place in a responsible manner with, you know, taking out your garbage and using the facilities appropriately, then we will have to reconsider it, or I would want to reconsider it.
So, you know, there are a couple of options. The parking lots are gated, so I can leave them locked and not allow people in there. Or people will, people will find a pla, they'll find some place to park if they want to get in there. They will park along the highway. We have a couple of handicap spots on, next to the beach. People, I've seen people, when I was there on Friday, there were people parked there, were not, didn't have handicap vehicles or stickers. I can, we can leave the gates locked, and it is as it is. We can unlock the gates and allow people to use it, but the facilities would remain locked, and you would take your stuff, you know, garbage in and out. So I guess I'd like your direction on how you'd like to proceed with Wall Lake. Because it, I don't have, typically, in a typical summer, the gates are closed at dusk, and we have everyone out of there. And the reason we do that is because in the past, we had problems with people partying there and vandalism. So we don't want that, so that's why we would lock the gates.
So Scott, is this an academic question until you can hire staff? I mean, is this a question that we, you can't really do anything for two weeks? Is that, is that true?
I can mow the, I can mow.
But this question about opening the, opening the gates and dealing with the bathrooms is really a question that depends on your staffing. Is that correct?
Partly, yes.
So we really aren't, I mean, so we could tell you that when you have staff, we would like to see you open the bathrooms and either open the gates or not open the gates, whatever. But this is not a question that's going to, something that's going to take effect tomorrow. It's something that's going to not take effect, at least until the governor's executive order
Well-
regarding at-risk people goes into effect?
No.
Okay.
We need to, we need to decide if we're going to open up the parking lot. So right now, the parking lots are gated, closed, shut. So if we, if we're going to leave it open and allow people to walk around the park and have minimal, some usage of it, or we leave the gates closed and people, they're not supposed to be parking on the sides of the highway, of the county highway. That is prohibited. So my concern is that we are, and we've had these, we've had complaints like this in the past where people then start parking. They'll go on the east side of the county highway and park on the gravel. And that, and then Wall Lake Township, people are calling me and the neighbors over there that they're unhappy with that. So we need to-
So in some ways, I feel like we're micromanaging the parks here a little bit. But, I mean, I'm open to discussion on this. I just feel like we're micromanaging a little bit. And so let's just talk a little bit about this and then let Scott go and figure out how to do this. Cindy.
Scott, is there, so if you open the gates today or tomorrow, is there someone that's going to lock them, or are you talking that you're just going to open them up and they would be? I think, I think that's where the confusion is.
We'd open them up and leave them open.
And then in two weeks, if we had staff coming back, then we'd start to go back to locking them?
We would then, if we have staff that comes back, we would probably go to locking them up in the evening and deciding what we want to- If you want me to make a decision on whether we open up the bathrooms for public use, I mean, we clean them every day, and once again, we could install some hand sanitizers. But I'd be glad to, if you want me to run with it, let me know.
Commissioner Karski.
My personal thought is, if it's open, we have to take care of the garbage, and we have to, we have to take care of everything. And if we can't do that, don't open it.
Okay.
Commissioner Heiburger.
My concern is, and I get where you're coming from, too. I can, and I'm fine with leaving it shut for two weeks if that's what we need to do. My concern is, is that if we're shut, they're going to be parking on the highway. They're going to be parking on the gravel, and they're going to dump all their garbage there.
So much for personal responsibility.
Right.
Commissioner Barth and Commissioner Benega, do either of you have any thoughts?
I have one. I agree that that's an operating issue, but my concern would be is if we leave the parking lot closed and we have an accident out there on the highway because somebody parked in the wrong spot, I would feel somewhat responsible for not letting people park in a parking lot that frankly would be a good alternative to letting them do whatever they need to do to find a place to park out there. So we built that parking lot to be used. If we want to leave the bathrooms closed till we get staff, that's fine, but causing traffic concerns is not a good idea.
Madam Chair, we have Falls Health Director Jill Franken on the phone from the city of Sioux Falls to answer any public health questions if they are arising from any commissioners.
Any questions for Jill? We appreciate Jill being available. Thank you. Commissioner Barth, did you have anything you wanted to chime in on?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Not really, but I was going to ask if Scott might report on our planning commission meeting last night, which I attended virtually.
Okay, well, let's just wrap this issue up, and then Scott can report on planning and zoning. So I hear lots of different things. I don't feel like Scott has gotten any clear direction from us, which is part of, you know, making decisions by committee can be challenging, and we don't really have an action to take part here. And so I think that, I think we have, unless somebody has something else, I think we've given you as much direction as we can give you this morning. And we will, we will work with you to move forward. Okay?
All right.
All right. And then if you want to give us an update on planning and zoning last night, thank you.
A quick update on last night's planning and zoning meeting. We conducted it through Zoom. I, this was my first experience with really running a large meeting on Zoom. And Carol and I talked about it this morning. I would, out of a zero to ten, I would probably give it a six. It was, it was a long process. And there's another whole new paradigm of questions that we need to, you know, work with our chairman to make sure that we ask every single time if anyone wants to participate on Zoom and raise your hand. And then there's a lag time. So we did sort of monitor and work with the people that were coming in, the public, make sure that they were social distancing themselves appropriately. And overall, the meeting, we accomplished the meeting. It was not normal, it wasn't as smooth as it normally ran. And we had a joint meeting with the cities of Sioux Falls. And one of the items that we, and I talked to Carol about, was the need for maybe microphones for the other commissioners, city commissioners. We had two that didn't have microphones. And they were, it was hard for the people participating on Zoom to hear what was being said by those participants when they made motions and whatnot. So other than that, we, we got it done. And I anticipate we will probably, for sure, have a meeting like that in May and probably in June. We'll see how, what June brings up.
We appreciate you being our guinea pig and all of that, so.
It was okay, so.
All right.
Anything else?
I don't think so. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
All right, so that takes us to item eighteen, which is to authorize the chair to sign an agreement to participate in the 2020 South Dakota Department of Transportation County Pavement Striping Program. DJ Boothey, who I believe is on the line. Are you there, DJ?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Good morning, Commissioners. DJ Boothey, Highway Superintendent. This is an annual agreement that we enter into with the South Dakota Department of Transportation. Every year, they've been allocating five hundred thousand dollars towards this program as a cost share with a sixty percent state and forty percent county match up to a certain limit. And that limit is based off mileages across the state and how many counties participate in the program. Everything that we stripe that is over that limit, then we're responsible for one hundred percent of that, that cost. This program is nice because the state administers everything. They solicit the bids and hire the contractors, and then we do an inspection on the work. But other than that, it's pretty hands-off for us. This year, with this program, we're going to be striping approximately a hundred and ninety miles of our roadways. And the estimated cost, cost for Minnehaha County is one hundred and sixty-two thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars. The county's share of this cost is a hundred and nineteen thousand, five hundred and ninety. That will end up depending on what the bids come in as and what the actual mileages are. Sometimes we go up or down from that estimated one hundred and ninety miles. But look for your approval on this participation agreement, and the state will move forward with soliciting bids.
Any questions for DJ? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I would make a, I would make a motion to approve, Benega. Second, Jeff.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Barth.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Heiburger.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item is item nineteen, to authorize the chair to sign an agreement with Geotechnical Testing Services for Project MC seventeen dash zero one, Highway one forty-six reconstruction. DJ.
Commissioners, this agreement with Geotech Engineering and Testing is something that we execute on every single construction project. Typically, the commission doesn't see these agreements because they are less than fifteen thousand dollars. Because of the scope of this construction project, the estimated cost for the testing services is significantly higher, requiring us to request approval of the contract through our purchasing policy. Using the estimated number of tests and the man-hours required for those tests and inspection, the estimated cost is seventy-three thousand, nine hundred dollars. Typically, we come in under what the estimate is, but that's what this agreement will be for. And it is billed out based on the number of tests actually performed and the number of hours of inspection for that work. of hours of inspection for that work. So, I'd like to request your approval of that contract, and I'll stand by for any questions.
Questions for DJ?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second, roll call vote, please.
Bennega.
Uh, Commissioner, I'm gonna have to abstain from that because I have a relationship with a Geotech ownership.
Okay, thank you.
Karski.
Aye.
Heiburger.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye, motion passes four to zero with one abstention. So, that takes us to item 20, which is to authorize the chair to sign an agreement with Excel Energy for utility relocation within the right-of-way of Project Seven, MC 17-01. DJ.
Commissioners, we've done a couple of other utility relocation agreements with other private utilities. Uh, this, uh, this agreement is with Excel Energy on the County Highway 146 Reconstruction Project. Excel Energy and Minnehaw County have been in negotiations for, uh, several months, probably over a year, uh, in this agreement, and the utilities that do need to be relocated because of the, the work. The agreement has an attachment that shows the number of poles that, that need to be relocated, and that's what this is based off of. There are 46, uh, poles and the, the associated lines that will need to be relocated with the work. Estimated cost is $170,000, or $170,899.71, and the agreement is enclosed, and I would request approval for executing that agreement.
Questions for DJ? Now, I'd entertain a motion.
Move to approve Bennega. Second, Jeff.
Motion and a second, roll call vote, please.
Karski.
Aye.
Heiburger.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Bennega.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye, motion passes unanimously, thank you. So, that takes us to item 22, which is to consider a motion to authorize the Highway Department to purchase from various state, national, and local procurement contracts. DJ.
Commissioners, I think we may have skipped item number 21, which is the annual materials contract.
Sorry, that's my bad, I did get ahead of myself there. All right, so we'll go to 21. Consider a bid result and award recommendations for the annual materials letting and authorize the chair to sign agreements with five vendors for the supplies. Bids open March 25th, 2020. Thanks for pointing that out, DJ.
You bet. Yeah, on March 25th, we had our annual materials letting, and we have five contracts this year. The first one is for, uh, MC 70 Asphalt Oil. Jebro Inc. is the contractor that, uh, we've worked with, I think, every year since I started as the Highway Superintendent, and, uh, contract number two is for hot mech, hot mixed asphalt. We bid 6,000 tons of asphalt this year, concrete materials was the low bidder. Uh, interestingly, the, the cost for asphalt the last three years has, has been fairly consistent, and this year, we received two bids. Uh, Merlin Roy's also bid, they were just a little bit higher than concrete materials, so we were happy to see that, that they bid and were competitive. Uh, proposal number three, or contract number three, is for snowplow and motor grader blade cutting edges, and Equipment Blades was the low bidder on that. Uh, contract number four is the abrasive and salt mixture, the salt sand. That's the salt and the sand salt that we put on the roads during the wintertime. Concrete Materials, um, is the salt sand, uh, bidder, or low bidder on that contract. And then contract number five, rock salt and the transportation, is the salt that we put on the roads, the bear, uh, salt that we put on the roads. Blackstrap Inc., who we've worked with in the past, was the low bidder on that contract. So, I would request your approval of these five contracts, and I'll stand by for any questions.
Questions for DJ, Commissioner Karski.
Point of order, can we approve them all in one motion, or since they're five separate contracts, do they have to be approved separately?
Well, approve them individually, thank you, Commissioner Karski. Any other questions or comments?
Move approval of proposal number one for the medium curing cutback asphalt.
Second.
So, a motion and a second on proposal number one. Uh, roll call vote, please.
Heiburger.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Bennega.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye, motion passes unanimously.
Motion to approve the hot mixed asphalt, concrete pavement to concrete materials.
Second.
Motion and a second, roll call vote, please.
Barth.
Aye.
Bennega.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Heiburger.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye, motion passes unanimously.
Motion for the snowplow and motor grade blades, cutting edges, Equipment Blades Incorporated.
Second.
Motion and a second on proposal number three. Roll call vote, please.
Bennega.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Heiburger.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye, motion passes unanimously.
Move to approve of proposal number four, abrasive and salt mixture to Concrete Materials Inc.
Second.
And a second, roll call vote, please.
Karski.
Aye.
Heiburger.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Bennega.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye, motion passes unanimously.
Proposal number five, uh, rock salt and transportation to Blackstrap Incorporated.
Second.
Motion and a second, roll call vote, please.
Heiburger.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Bennega.
Bennega.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. All right, now we get to go to item 22.
Okay, so Commissioners, this is, they're requesting authorization to purchase various materials and supplies using procurement contracts. That's one of the requirements that we have in our purchasing policy. Uh, whenever we purchase off of somebody else's state contract for, uh, materials or services, we are required to get the commission's approval to do that. Uh, we have 10 contracts listed that are, uh, pretty regular items that we purchase throughout the year, and we request to purchase those at the same time as we request the approval of the annual materials contracts that we just approved. Uh, I'll go through them individually. Uh, first, we have tires. Uh, the local vendor for the NASBO contract is Goodyear, Bridgestone, Firestone, and Michelin, and that's contract 19101. Uh, the second one is fuel, uh, the state of South Dakota has contracts for fuel. They bid that, I think, every day or every week, uh, and so, they have various different vendors. Their contract number is B1609. Uh, the mastic material is the next one that we are requesting. Uh, the state of South Dakota has a contract for that through Brock White Company, and contract number PMB 01231 and 17399. Uh, the next one is building and shop supplies through NASBO. Uh, the two vendors are Fastenal and Granger, and there's several different contracts that are, that are used through those two vendors. Uh, the next one is different auto parts through NASBO, and we purchased from Napa and O'Reilly Automotive off of, uh, several different contracts from Oklahoma. Uh, the next one is automotive filters through the state of South Dakota contract from I State Trucks, contract IFB 793 and 17011. The next one is digital radios through the state of South Dakota, through Levitt Communications and Sioux Falls Two Way Radio Service, contract 16944. Uh, contract number eight is the LED light bars that we put in our trucks and our snowplow vehicles, uh, through a NASBO contract from Sound Off Signal and Wheel and Engineering Company. That's Minnesota, contract 165270, and then NASBO reference number is 17358. Contract number nine is the steel culverts that we, uh, put on some gravel roads under different, uh, approaches, and a lot of the, uh, townships will purchase those as well. That's a Union County contract through True North, True North Steel, and Union County does not have a contract number, they just call it an annual contract. And the concrete culverts is the last contract. Uh, Lincoln County holds a contract with Hancock Concrete Products and Semcast Pipe and Precast, and those are the culverts that we would put under our county highways, and that is an annual contract through Lincoln County. They don't, they do not have a contract number. So, I'd request your approval of those purchases throughout the year, and I'll stand by for any questions.
Questions for DJ? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, this is Jeff.
Commissioner Barth.
DJ, I don't remember, uh, uh, seeing this list of, uh, contracts in the past. Is this a, a new development?
Commissioner, Commissioner, no, this is a, an approval item every year, and it is generally the same list of materials. The contract holders are usually the same, and the vendors might change throughout from year to year, uh, but it's something that we have approved every year.
Perhaps it's just that I've not had to listen to you read them all before. Thank you.
You bet.
Pay more attention when you're sitting at home than when you're sitting in the commission room.
Ouch.
Okay, any other questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second. Second, Bennega.
All right, we have a motion and at least one second, roll call vote, please.
Barth.
Aye.
Bennega.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Heiburger.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. All right, this takes us to your last item, DJ, item 23. Consider bid results and award recommendations for mowing and trimming and authorize chair to sign an agreement with CMG Property Maintenance, Maintenance for Project MC 20-07. Bids open March 25th, 2020. DJ.
Commissioners, this is the, this is the second year that we are doing contracted mowing services for our right-of-way. Uh, last year, we had CMG Property Maintenance as well, and, uh, last year, the contract, I think, was around $50,000, and it was, uh, the bid last year was significantly lower than the second lowest bid. You can see the, the bids are listed there this year. It's also CMG Property Maintenance, and he won this one by less than $100 on a $74,896 contract. So, pretty tight bids on the first two bids there, and, uh, Chris Greasy is CMG Property Maintenance. He did a great job last year, we were happy with that service, and this is still cheaper than we are able to perform this work in-house, and so, we are recommending approval of this contract, and I'll stand by for any questions.
Commissioner Heiburger.
Just a comment, and I did mention this once before, that I, you know, I live in the rural county, and Commissioner Bender does too, but I've seen, uh, Mr. Greasy out there, working weekends and in the evenings and everything, and, and the road maintenance that he has been doing is great, and it's also, uh, to me, very gratifying to see that those bids were so close that, um, we're probably right on target with what we're paying for it, so. I would make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, any other comments? If not, roll call vote, please.
Bennega.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Heiburger.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye, motion passes unanimously, thank you very much. All right, that takes us to item 24, which is to authorize the chair to sign an engagement letter with Attorney Jim Weidrich to provide legal representation in construction of highway facility and renovation of the administration and extension building. Craig Dewey, it's been an ongoing process. Craig on the phone, Craig?
Good morning, Craig Dewey, Commission Office. As Commissioner Bender described to you, uh, this letter is for engagement of Jim Weidrich's legal representation. He has significant experience in the area of construction and construction manager-at-risk, CMAR, and the county has actually been working with, uh, Mr. Weidrich in the expansion of the jail, and that process, as you know, is ongoing, uh, nearing the very final stages here, and has been a very smooth process, in part, certainly, to Mr. Weidrich's, uh, legal expertise that he has been able to lend to the county in relation to that project. And so, as the county considers, uh, potential construction and renovation projects for a highway facility, the administration building and extension building, there would be an opportunity, uh, to also reengage Mr. Weidrich for those services, and that is what is before you. Uh, I would be happy to answer any questions that you do have.
Questions?
Would make a motion for approval, Bennega. This is Jeff, I'll second.
Motion and a second, any final comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Karski.
Aye.
Heiburger.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Bennega.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye, motion passes unanimously, thank you. And that takes us to item 25, which is to authorize the chair to sign an addendum to the agreement with Sodbusters Radio Control Model Airplane, AMA Charter 1710. Craig Dewey.
Good morning, Craig Dewey, Commission Office again. Uh, the Sodbusters are a model airplane club that has been utilizing the unmined gravel pit that the county owns for conducting some club activities for flying of their airplanes. The commission is, uh, considering in, uh, the future at some point, uh, declaring that property surplus and selling that property. As such, given that it is time for Sodbusters renewal, the previous contract was for three years, and, uh, since the surplus declaration could occur potentially, uh, later in 2020, instead of renewing for a three-year period, as is common with some other leases, once the initial term expires, then the lease goes to a month-to-month basis. And so, the two provisions that are changing with this contract addendum are moving to that, uh, 30-day, uh, rolling basis on that month-to-month basis, and then also, uh, should the county declare the property surplus and sell it, uh, or the Sodbusters, uh, arrange other land where they can conduct their activities, uh, either party could provide a 30-day notice, uh, to, uh, remove themselves from the lease. And, uh, there is no charge, uh, as far as revenue that the county receives on this lease. Uh, certainly, uh, the Sodbusters are very appreciative of this agreement and, uh, would desire to continue to utilize the land until the point at which the county, uh, is, uh, able to sell the land here, uh, would be happy to answer any questions in regard to this contract addendum. Uh, I guess, lastly, I would add that throughout, uh, 2020, the Commission Office, including myself, as well as Carol Mueller, have been in contact at multiple points with the Sodbusters membership, as well as their leadership, and so, uh, these were the terms that were agreeable, uh, to, uh, both, uh, the Sodbusters as well as the Commission Office, which is why this addendum, uh, is before you for consideration.
Any questions for Craig? Comments? Movements?
Move approval.
Motion to approve, Bennega.
Second.
So, it'd be a motion and a second, roll call vote, please.
Heiburger.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Bennega.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. All right, that takes us to item 26, liaison reports, liaison reports, are there any today? I think we've all been busy with our liaisons with primarily COVID-related things. I know there was a Metro Communications Board meeting, did you want to say anything about that, Commissioner Karski?
Sure, I knew there was something. We did have the Metro Communications Board meeting last week, we, uh, did approve their, um, budget request, I guess, that'll be coming through the county. You're going to see, a- and actually, I think the ask is out to, um, Scott McMahon to come and talk to the, at a commission meeting, just give a, give all of you a more in-depth, um, report than what I can give right here, right now. I kept the budgets. So, what we're seeing is, everybody's phone bill has a 911 charge on it, basically, that goes to, um, fund public safety answering points across the state of South Dakota, of which there are way too many, in my opinion, 32. Uh, the amount of revenue being generated by that, um, has remained fairly consistent. Unfortunately, the cost to run a Metro Communications, our 911 center continually increased just because of our growth in the area. Um, you're going to see da-da-da, an increase of about a hundred thousand dollars from nineteen to twenty for the county's share, and then from twenty to twenty-one, another hundred and twelve thousand dollars, and then projected for 2022, another, um, roughly a hundred thousand dollars. So our funding is going from, um, make sure I get the right line here, three hundred and fifty-nine thousand in 2019 to six hundred and forty-six thousand in 2022. So those are significant increases that you, um, are going to be seeing. Um, there are four, um, approved, full-time equivalent approved for this year in 2020. None being asked for again until the year 2022. So what's happening is the nine-one-one surcharge in 2019 was fifty-seven point four percent of our, um, revenues, and in 2022 is forty-eight percent of our revenues. So we are seeing just, uh, the numbers staying the same, but not covering our costs. So we will be having a report, I believe, um, if the ask hasn't been made to Scott, for him to come and talk to us a little bit more, maybe answer some questions, so.
Obviously, very important service to everybody. Um, even right now, they're on the front lines and, uh, in coordinating a lot of COVID response. But also very sobering, um, financial news in a time where governmental entities are, are gonna be struggling with income. And so, um, I think that it will be really fascinating to hear Scott come and talk, and I think that it might be an area where we might wanna, um, talk to our legislators about how some of this is funded and, and, uh, ways that some of the funding issues could be addressed other than just, um, by Minnehaha County residents. So. All right, thank you. Any other liaison reports?
Item Chair, it's Jeff here.
Yes, Commissioner Barth?
You know, uh, Dean can, uh, help me on this too, because we had the, uh, intergovernmental board meeting last night at the mult- or not last night, last week at the, uh, with the multicultural center. And, uh, you know, we also all remoted in on that. Let me say that, uh, the most significant thing that I heard was that there seemed to be issues in our community, in our area, where, uh, people of, uh, Asian heritage are being harassed, and, uh, uh, Smithfield workers are also being harassed. And it's, uh, fairly despicable. Uh, Dean, do you have any thoughts on that?
I really don't have anything I could add to it. I mean, I, I, I agree that, you know, the report was made, and in fact, um, like, the mayor made the comment that some businesses are refusing to serve or sell or service, um, Smithfield employees, which I hadn't heard that before, but if it is going on, I tell them to knock it off. Um, be my only comment.
You know, there's a lot of fear out there about COVID relation, related issues, and, you know, some of that is understandable. But, um, it's not an excuse to, um, take it out on certain groups, uh, who are already bearing the brunt of a lot of, um, the issues created by COVID, both health-related and financially and, um, and socially. So, um, once again, our, our mantra for the today about personal responsibility, uh, there, there is no excuse for doing that. Uh, um, you can blame it on fear, you could blame it on COVID, but ultimately, um, the words come out of a person's mouth. And, and we're all responsible for the words that we say, so. All right, did you have another report, Commissioner Karski?
Yeah, just to add, you know, I kind of emphasize the county's cost of the metro communications, you know, going from three hundred and fifty-nine thousand to six hundred and forty-six thousand. And that is the Minnehaha County taxpayers. The city's share is going from a million seventy-eight thousand to one million nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand. So those increases are shared by both the city and the county proportionally, I guess, but.
We'll do that.
Those are some pretty significant numbers.
Um, wait till the exec. All right, thanks. No, that's okay, thanks. Sorry, that was Commissioner Benega. So he's gonna join us. He had to leave for a second, but he'll join us back for our executive session. Anything else? No other liaison reports? All right, item twenty-seven, new business. Any new business? Item twenty-eight, old business. Any old business? All right. Before I go to take a motion to recess, I would like to point out that, uh, kudos to Carol Muller, because she is the only person I've ever seen perfectly matched their face mask to their outfit. So those of you who can't see her, um, are missing out. All right, now I'd entertain a motion to recess the Minnehaha County Commission meeting.
Motion to recess.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Bar?
Commissioner Barth? I think we might have lost both Commissioners Barth and.
Sorry. No, I, I was there. I just, I had my phone muted and was speaking into the air here. Aye.
Aye, thank you.
And then Bender?
Yes.
And then Karski? Hi, Berger?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. So motion passes four to zero with Commissioner Benega. I'm having to exit the meeting shortly. All right, we will reconvene in the executive session in five minutes? All right, thank you.